Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to have a little bit of, yep, we're going to get ready to get started. And I would like to stand for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance on the flag, please.
Will you join me in prayer? Almighty God, we give you thanks for all the blessings of summer on the eastern shore, for warmth and rain, for the shade of trees and long days, for the taste of fresh fruits and vegetables, for visitors and vacations. Keep us safe from windstorms and excessive heat, from pandemics and insect-borne disease. Give us hope and a common sense of purpose as we embark on a new budget year, as we welcome new staff and reward longtime employees. Keep us mindful of those who are less fortunate in our community, that our actions and deliberations may be for the betterment of the entire public of Talbot County. We ask this in your most blessed name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Leisher, for that nine words of blessing, and appreciate it. Okay, let's start with the agenda. With the July 13th agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, the minutes, June 8th and June 22nd. Does counsel had a chance to review the minutes? And June 8th and June 22nd, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. On disbursements, on the 29th of June, July 6th and July 13th, council has had a chance to review the disbursements. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the disbursements? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the disbursements be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, we got to roll that. All right, we have a presentation tonight. If you'd like to come on up, on the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Board. You want to introduce yourself, that would be great.
I sure will. I'm Dan McDermott, the executive director of the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Board, and this is Joanne Gannon, the assistant director of the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Board. Thank you for the time on the agenda, and thank you for the appointments that you've made to the board, Mary Ellen Carter, Michael Brustein, Eric Daniels, all really good members, heavily involved, knowledgeable, couldn't ask for better. We're here today to talk about the Upper Shore Workforce Plan, local plan, 2020 to 2024. This is the third four-year plan we've written in the last six years. So Congress is the law, Congress is money, so they make the rules and we take it. So the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act became law in 2014, July 22nd, and a local plan is required to keep the federal job training and other employment and training money coming into the region, the region being Kent, Queen Anne, Talbot, Caroline, and Dorchester County. There are two main roles for the Workforce Investment Board. The first role is the compliance role. That's what I spend my time on, writing plans, memorandums of understanding, all the things that we have to have in place to have the federal money come in, not just for us, but for nine other partners who make up our American Job Center Consortium. Joanne gets to have all the fun because the second use at the Workforce Investment Board is training people and helping people invest in their human capital and get better jobs and get jobs, and she has, you know, she gets to have fun while I write plans. So all this taken together, what's it mean? We have to have a plan, and we have to submit it to the Governor's Workforce Development Board and with concurrence to submit from all five counties. The Maryland Plan is a combined plan, which means other agencies like Social Services, Division of Rehabilitation Services, Adult Education, Maryland Labor, the Job Service, and some other functions, the money they spend on employment and training functions have to be in this plan because the governor decided he wanted a combined plan. So it's not just what we do at the Workforce Board, it's what those partners do as well. So they're also included. So what's in the plan? Section 1, 2, and 3 are an overview of the regional economy, and that has to align with the state analysis of the state economy. So the reason the plan is 2020 to 2024, and it's July of 2021, is the state has to submit a plan for the period. It has to be approved by the U.S. Department of Labor, U.S. Department of Education, then we, the 13 local areas, have to write a plan that aligns with the state plan. So they have to get their plan approved first, and then we have to, you know, backtrack to, you know, so that's why the, that's why it might seem, it might seem strange that it's 2020, 2020 plan and it's 2021. So that's what section 1, 2, and 3 are. Section 4 talks about the American Job Centers. There's an American Job Center in every county. Talbot County has the distinction of having the comprehensive American Job Center, which means all partners have to be there, and the center is open Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. So the other counties were there a couple of days a week, in some cases, you know, three days, four days, a couple of cases, just two days. Talbot County, we're here all the time. It's our comprehensive center. The law says you have to have one comprehensive center that's here, then you can have satellite centers in the, in the other areas. So that's how we do it. Bay Street, where 301 Bay Street, you may have seen that or known about it. We've called it through the years, the American Job Center, the Career Center, the Career One Stop. Everyone goes, you mean the unemployment office? And we go, no, it hasn't been that in 25 years, but, you know, we don't fight, we go, yeah, that's it, 301 Bay Street. The American Job Center's just reopened after the, you know, the governor lifted, you know, some of his orders. So they reopened last week. Prior to that, all services by partners were being delivered virtually, and in Talbot County, 2,854 individuals received 18,152 services through the American Job Center partnership while it was closed down. So that's a tribute to Joanne and people like Joanne and the other agencies who, you know, did all the work to turn us from in-person to virtual, you know, like everything else overnight. Throughout the plan, on almost every section, I think I put a COVID disclaimer that said this plan's written during the pandemic and all that, because it was hard to write a four-year plan when everything was shut down and we were dealing with COVID, and knowing in two or three years, that's going to seem, hopefully seem very bizarre, you know, that, you know, what we were looking at when this thing was written. Section 5 is the Title I Training Policies. That's what Joanne lives and works with every day. Section 6 to 13 are the policies for the nine American Job Center partners whose federal money is included as part of our efforts. These sections are really the essence of the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. Depending on which GAO general, used to be General Accounting Office, Government Accountability Office study, there's either 93 or 47 redundant federal programs that do employment and training. So we've at least corralled 17 of those, of those funding streams through this plan and some other work that we do that I'll talk about in a minute. Section 14 is the nondiscrimination provisions for Title I. We're the only entity that's not a state agency involved in this plan, so we have to have our own nondiscrimination policies. We have to articulate that in the plan. And section 15 is the fiscal and performance policies for what we, what we do. I want to talk about that for a minute because the way a workforce board stays a workforce board, every two years, the governor, through the Governor's Workforce Development Board, looks at the local boards, and we have to have made performance, and we have to have fiscal integrity, that is, clean audits. Making performance means that the feds set levels for us, the percentage of people that we work with who get a job, keep a job, how much money they make, did they earn a credential, did they have a skills gain? If we meet those goals, everything's good. If we have a clean audit, everything's good, and we can remain a workforce board and then bring this money into the area. And so that's kind of important, you know, for us, and when we say, you know, talk about accountability, we are accountable. I mean, it's not, oh, we spent all the money, oh, we have American Job Centers. It's when we brought somebody in, all these partners, did they get a job, keep a job, how much money did they make? If you do training, as Joanne does, did they have a skills gain? Did they get a credential? And we really want that box, the chart has green boxes and red boxes, so we're green, and we want to keep it that way. One of the reasons we want to keep it that way is so that we stay a workforce development board. In the last year, the efforts of the workforce development directors across the state have gotten us, because we're workforce boards, there's some legislators, Maryland legislators, who've written us into pieces of legislation, particularly the budget. Our allocation for WEOWA, Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, for this year in Maryland is 29 million. Our allocation from other sources is 30, 42 million. So we've been able to bring in more money than we're getting from the feds because we're workforce boards, and that's going to benefit, you know, every county, including Talbot, immensely. We're, we're in a position now we've never been in before, and in a minute, I'll tell you, you know, I'm going to use your television feed to do a PR move to try to bring people in. So the other thing we'll be back to you for in near future is concurrence on our memorandum of understanding and resource sharing agreement for the American Job Centers. This plan is vision. The MOU RSA is, is, is mission. It's the who, what, when, where, how of our efforts, and so we have to get concurrence on that as well. But tonight, we're just asking for concurrence on this. The other funds we've been able to access in addition to workforce funds are Midshore Community Foundation, Chesapeake College Relief Act, Talbot County Social Services, and American Rescue Plan Act funds. So right now, we're in a position we've never been in before. We're not sure there is, we think everyone's eligible right now. So anybody you know in the audience or at home, if you're interested in investing in your human capital, USWIB2020@gmail.com, send an email, say I'm interested in training, and that'll trigger a process. We bring people in. Joanne and her mantra is, how can we say yes? And we've never been there before, so we really would appreciate anybody, you know, who's interested. But in the meantime, we have to have this plan. It seems like that's all I do, plans, MOUs, RSA, compliance. Right now, we're having two different entities monitor us, and we're being audited at the same time, so all I do is give people the same documents over and over. Couple of years ago, we organized a roundtable of federal initiatives with Senator Cardin, and I said, Senator Cardin, all I do is write plans and do compliance, and, you know, I never get to have any fun in my job. And he said, well, Dan, there are people whose job it is to make you write plans and do compliance, so, and I said, I'm not whining. And he goes, I know you're not whining. I said, I think if you had a thought bubble, you would, it would say, Dan is whining right now. But again, it's Congress's law, Congress's money, so we have to do what we need to do to bring that money in, and we need to do what we need to do to stay as a workforce board, because that's brought in more money than what we're getting because we're a workforce board, if that makes sense. So we appreciate through the years your all's support. The workforce board, the Upper Shore, has been around since 1983, never had problems with performance, fiscal integrity, or recertification, and we intend to keep it that way for however long. So, but we're here tonight to talk about the plan, ask for concurrence, and so we can submit it, and then move on to the next level of compliance while Joanne gets to have fun helping people.
Appreciate that, Dan. Does Joanne want to say a couple things?
I just get to have fun.
Well, truthfully, I get to carry the pen, but I only get to sign stuff when Joanne tells me I can.
Yeah, I got you. So, okay, counsel, we have boards, do you have any?
Well, no, I mean, thanks for coming in and giving us the plan again, Dan, and Joanne, good seeing you again. And I will say, the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Board, since I've been a part of this council, has been a great partner across many entities, coming in for training or job readiness, so they take, they take the initiative to make sure that people who want to work and who want to hone their skills in a certain area have the ability to do that. So glad to have them still a part of this community and a part of the eastern shore.
Thank you, Mr. Pat, Ms. Price.
We're good. Thank you for the report every year, and we'll sign off.
Billy?
Just to say that it's always nice seeing you, Dan, and hearing from you. I've reached out to you, I think, once or twice before on other things, and you're, you've just been a great asset to the community, and it was, you know, trying to network together for jobs. I can't thank you enough, and as cumbersome as this is, it is a great read and a lot of, a lot of great information. It's neat kind of coming from the schools, watch, getting that information, watching the little kids, and then seeing you guys come in and showing us what adults can do and what opportunities are out there, it's great.
Vice President?
And hopefully you don't have to come back to us next year for the updated four-year plan.
Well, Councilman Leisher, you know, under the last law, they just kept, we had something like the seventh update of the second revision of the, of the four-year plan. They didn't say, new four-year plan, they kept, and it got to be absolutely ridiculous because we'd say, we're here for the seventh update of the. I will say, we will be, we will be back in two years because the four-year plan has a lot about Governor Hogan in it. He's term limited, so all that has to change, so when there's a new governor, we have to read, the state plan and the local plan have to be redone. So we'll be back with the four-year plan in two years.
And I'll make a motion.
Yeah, motion, we go ahead and approve the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Combined Plan 20, 2024 Plan.
Happy with my side.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Thank you, and we'll be back, we'll, we'll send you the MOU RSA. I'm thinking about getting that out on Thursday, and we, you'll get an email from the vendor. We'll, we'll make sure that you know about it.
I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
She's going to take care of it on the way home in her car.
Pretty much.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is Talbot Humane. Ms. Patty, want to come on up? Welcome.
Hi, how are you? Good evening.
Good.
I know you have a packed schedule, so I'm going to hit my Cliff Notes, and if it's, I will send you my full report, and you can ask questions, so.
Okay.
But I do want to talk about fiscal year 2021 stats. Our intake of animals was down by 6% at 806 animals. That's actually a 33% decrease from 2011, so in 10 years, we have decreased exponentially, I feel, the numbers coming in. Our outcomes, we had 491 adoptions, 64 animals returned to owner, 66 other animals went to other rescue groups, relocated wildlife, or returned to the field. We've provided humane euthanasia for 84 pets owned by our residents, and we reduced our shelter euthanasia by 35% last year with 74 animals euthanized. All of those were either medically critical or behaviorally unsound. We had 29 animals that died or arrived deceased from accidents, and our 250 animals benefited from foster care provided by volunteers in our community. Our animal control responded to 326 initial complaints. They actually responded to probably close to more than 700 complaints with follow-ups, providing services to the community, transporting to vets, all of those, those things. Stray animals continue to decrease coming into us, and that's thanks to our animal-loving community, people, if you put it on social media, people are looking for your pets and trying to help you get your pets back, and it's a huge help to us, and it's really nice to see people caring about their neighbors. We are continuing to see bite cases increase, and we're not really sure why that is, so we've really been working on our campaign to encourage people to be using proper restraint with their animals, reading your pet's behavior, and being careful with pets around children. Today's stats, we have 86 cats in our care, 16 dogs, 11 small mammals or reptiles, 20 animals in foster care, and that's 133 total animals in our care, which is down. This time last year, we had 180 animals in our care, so I'm hoping these numbers continue to stay where they are. As you know, I talk to you all the time about, we believe the best shelter is a humane community, and I believe we're making that, our humane, our community a more humane community. Fiscal year 21 was the lowest intake that I've seen in 22 years of being in animal welfare at our shelter, and that is through our programs that we provide under our Talbot Humane umbrella. We provided 100, excuse me, 1,250 spay or neuter surgeries last year. So if you consider that we provided 35% services, 35% more animals through that program alone than what came into our shelter, that's huge. Our intervention program provided 15,000 pounds of food to the community. We supplied crates, litter pans, resources from our team that have behavior knowledge with animals, and we provided acute medical intervention to people for their pets so that they did not have to surrender them. We want to remind people, we have a microchip program. We have found a vendor for much less cost, so we can provide $10 microchips at all time now to the community. That includes registration, and our officers are still out there providing daily services to residents besides responding to complaints, as I shared, transporting the vets, dropping off food, giving guidance on better pet practices. We did receive the Maryland Department of Ag Spay-Neuter Grant. We have already used that this year. We, we actually, as of June 24th, that money has been used, but our, thanks to our generous community donations and our board who is committed to our mission of providing low and no-cost spay-neuter programs, we will continue to provide this through the end of the year to the community. We want to remind people that the microchip program is important, that today, today alone, two animals made it back home because of microchips. We have continued our pet loss group through Zoom. I'm hoping that perhaps by September, we will be meeting in person again. Maybe in August, we're trying to work out proper place for that. But the beauty of Zoom is I've had people join us from Arizona, Bethesda, Pennsylvania, so we're helping people not just in our community, so I think we're going to do a hybrid that will have the Zoom call and in-person for people. And of course, our volunteer program, our humane ed program has stopped, excuse me, has started back up. I'm going to camps this summer. That's actually one of my favorite parts of my job, is going out with my dog Breezy or my tortoise, and showing kids how to be kind animals, safe with animals, and being responsible pet owners. And as I said, our student internship program, school will be starting any, very soon, and we encourage seniors who are interested in the animal sciences to contact us about interning with us. Last but not least, our fundraising efforts, which we feel like we never stop doing. Right now, we have our calendar contests going on, so there's still time for people to vote or enter their pets. And Unleashed will be starting up soon. August 4th is our informational meeting, and we are super excited about having another season this year, and we have opportunities for our local businesses to sponsor, be corporate sponsors this year, which is really exciting. And last but not least, I think this is possibly my most exciting thing. Next year, Talbot Humane celebrates 90 years of serving our community. So we are working on some really fun things throughout the year that we want to do to celebrate past, present, and future of Talbot Humane, so. And I, as always, I welcome you to come visit at the shelter. I know some people are looking for a little dog, so I'm still looking for one. And some people adopted a cat recently, so, yeah, that's, I know, that wasn't your, wasn't your first choice.
Yeah, that's a whole nother subject.
But thank you for your time tonight.
Hey, thank you, Patty.
Patty, I heard you mentioned the microchipping. There was a story on one of those evening magazine shows, a woman was on vacation, and somehow her dog got away from her. Two years passed, and Doug was with another owner, and that owner unfortunately passed away. The Humane Society at that, at that area went ahead and, do you guys wand the dogs?
Wand the dog, every animal that comes in, yes.
They wand the dog down, and the chip came up, and it was back to this other owner that had the dog, two years later, you know.
Yeah, we've had two in Maryland. One was a border collie that was from Dorchester County and ended up at Howard County Animal Control. It was lost for two years. And then you may remember, for those who are on social media, there was a Boston terrier that went missing last Fourth of July, and he was gone for eight months, and he was found in Baltimore. He went missing in Ocean City, was found in Baltimore. Somebody did the right thing and took it to the vet to be checked for a microchip, and he was reunited with his owner. So, and we see these cases a lot. It's really important to microchip your pets, so, yeah.
I'm sorry. I was just listening, I was thinking, maybe we should all get microchipped kittens. We all get lost. I can't find my. Yeah, it's always good to get the updates a couple times a year. We appreciate everything that goes on there, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I lost my dog earlier this year and chased a deer and ran away for a day and a half, and I finally found it, and you shared it. I think it was shared 300 times on Facebook. It was crazy, and people were willing to help out.
Oh, yeah.
But I would like to thank you for the vaccination and rabies clinic that you held. I thought that was a good idea.
So we work, the health department does the actual rabies clinics. My goal this year is to work with them to, because with COVID, they were overwhelmed. I would like to work with them. We have a veterinarian now on our board of directors who is very community-minded, and then we can get our licenses out there, too, and, you know, but we do do the rabies and the, rabies and vaccines through our spay-neuter program. So a lot of people are getting their vaccines through that, too, so. But yes, it's important, so.
My household, too, has been a 10-year host for a shelter fund, so we've benefited, too. Good news, and I take it as good news, the reduced census in the shelter.
It's very good news.
In terms of there being less need for abuse or abandoned animals. I'm curious, I know that a year and a half, two years ago, on, on your board's recommendation, we, we passed an updated animal control ordinance here, and I'm curious, is there measurable impact from that? Is that part of the success, or how do you, how do you attribute the, this good news?
Well, I think part of it is our intervention program, that we are encouraging people to keep their pets with a little assistance, a little education, a little assistance. We're not going back into what we call that cycle of, I can't take care of this pet, I don't know what to do, they drop it off, and then six months later, they get a new pet. We're teaching them how to, or assisting them with their acute needs, which last year, there were a lot of them. People who never needed our help before needed us last year. And I think that the change in the ordinance has made a huge difference. I think, I go back to our, the best shelter is a humane community. When we have higher standards for expectation of how we take care of animals in our communities, people step up to that. They don't, they don't want to not do what they're supposed to do. Most people are law-abiding citizens, even if they grumble a little bit, they do what they need to do. The number, we don't see animals living on tethers in Talbot County anymore, thanks to our county council. We've had excessive heat, excessive heat, and I am knocking on wood right now, we have not had any tragic cases or close to tragic cases this summer. And I think it's because we have set those standards that people know at 85 degrees, you have got to provide extra protection for your animals. So, and we did not have any tragic cases, excuse me, last winter. So, and we did not have any tragic cases, excuse me, last winter with animals freezing or such. Of course, we get called out, and we have to address things, but we're not seeing the excessive extremes that we were seeing, which means our cruelty cases in our county are reducing as well. And that's huge, and that is a huge, has a huge part to do with the change in our ordinance.
That sounds great. Patty, Talbot County and the council and everybody around here, we're blessed to have somebody like you that cares, who does such a phenomenal job.
Thank you. I love what I do.
You really do, and it shows, it shows, so.
Well, and it's not just me. I have a crazy, amazing team around me.
I'm sure you got a phenomenal staff, so we really appreciate you coming in tonight, and please don't call Julie again.
I won't, actually. Julie and I have, you know.
I know, I know, it's a problem.
The old, old problem cats.
Mr. Pack.
Before you step away, with the warmer weather, people are driving around with their windows down, getting some fresh air. And I was passing this driver, I noticed this driver, and had a dog in the backseat, and this thing must have been three-quarters out of the window. What is the ordinance on that, if I may ask?
That is a motor vehicle law, so there is not, it is not a law that animals have to be restrained. They cannot be, they cannot be in a dangerous manner, so.
Three-quarters out the window is not a danger.
That is up to our wonderful police agencies if they so choose. I cannot, my officers cannot stop people driving down the street, so. If you want, you know, if we want to change those things, we can work on that. No, yeah, but, yeah, riding in the back of pickups, hanging out the car windows. There are times when they, people have been stopped, but there's our motor vehicle laws. We've been called, and we've called the police and said, can you check on this? It's out of our purview, unfortunately.
Okay, well, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, let's move on to the public hearing. We, Madam Secretary, would you please read the bills into the record, and then we'll open the public hearing unless there's any objections? Yep?
Bill number fourteen seventy-four, a bill to authorize a capital project for improvements to Airport Road. Bill number fourteen seventy-five, a bill to amend Bill number fourteen nineteen, the appropriation for a capital project for the installation of a belt filter press to upgrade the Region Two St. Michael's wastewater treatment plant. Bill number fourteen seventy-six, a bill to authorize a master plan for the Bill Burton State Park located at two-nine-seven-six-one Bowling Brook Point Drive, Trap, Maryland. Bill number fourteen seventy-seven, a bill to amend Bill numbers thirteen sixty-six and fourteen forty-eight, the appropriations for a capital project for improvements to Black Dog Alley. Bill number fourteen seventy-eight, a bill to authorize the expansion of broadband to unserved and underserved areas of Talbot County. Bill number fourteen seventy-nine, a bill to amend Bill number twelve forty-four, the appropriation for a capital project for the roof replacement at the Talbot County Courthouse, South Wing. Bill number fourteen eighty, a bill to amend Bill numbers thirteen ninety-three and fourteen fifty-two, the appropriations for a capital project for the development of the Frederick Douglas Park on the Tuckahoe located at one-three-two-one-three Lewistown Road, Queen Anne, Maryland. Bill number fourteen eighty-one, a bill to authorize the replacement of the roof at Easton High School. Bill number fourteen eighty-two, a bill to amend Bill number fourteen fifty-nine, the appropriation for a capital project to resurface, repave the Easton High School parking lot. Bill number fourteen eighty-three, a bill to amend Bill number fourteen forty-nine, the appropriation for a capital project to replace the Easton High School football track. Bill number eighteen, fourteen eighty-four, a bill to authorize a capital project for the construction of emergency medical services stations. Bill number fourteen eighty-five, a bill to authorize a capital project for the replacement of the ice plant at the Talbot County Community Center ice rink. Bill number fourteen eighty-six, a bill to amend Bill number fourteen twenty-four, the appropriation for a capital project to purchase land for future county purchases. Bill number fourteen eighty-seven, a bill to amend Bill number thirteen ninety-six, the appropriation for a capital project for improvements to Talbot County Government Bay Street Facility Parking Lots, Easton, Maryland. Bill number fourteen eighty-eight, a bill to authorize a capital project for the upgrade or replacement of the wastewater treatment plant at the Preserve at Y Mills. Bill number fourteen eighty-nine, a bill to authorize the construction of a Talbot County Public Safety Center. Bill number fourteen ninety, a bill to amend Bill numbers thirteen sixty-six, fourteen thirty, and fourteen fifty-four, the appropriations for a capital project for the Region Two St. Michael's Wastewater Treatment System rehabilitation and improvements. And Bill number fourteen ninety-one, a bill to abandon Bill number fourteen sixty-one, which authorized a capital project for the resurfacing, repaving of the St. Michael's School Parking Lot.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, now I will open the public hearing on Bills numbers fourteen seventy-four through fourteen ninety-one. If you wish to provide comments, please provide your name and address, as well as the number of bills that you, that you would like to comment on. You have three minutes if you wish to speak individually, and five minutes if you wish to speak on behalf of an organization. Bill fourteen seventy-four and fourteen ninety-one are eligible for, for vote tonight, correct?
Yes, they're all eligible, yes.
Okay. No, the twenty to twenty.
We're going to have a public hearing first.
Okay, okay.
And if a council member wishes to move it to a third reader.
Correct, yep. Okay, so do we have a council member wishing to move this to?
No, no.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'm going to open it to a public hearing, so I'm going to start on my left side. Our main man Dirk, he got to have something.
Spend all the money.
I got you.
That's not what she said when you were here.
Okay. The next, the next row, does anybody have any comments on the bills in the, in the last row? Okay, I'll start here to my right. Okay, come on up. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Callahan, members of the council, I really wasn't planning to speak on this tonight, but.
No problem, could you tell us who you are?
I didn't know that you were going to be addressing a capital, Bill number fourteen eighty-eight.
Could you, could you tell us?
My name is William Anderson.
Yeah.
I reside at two-one-seven-one-five Heavenly Haven Road in Sherwood.
Okay.
I am the chairperson of the Public Works Advisory Board for Talbot County.
Okay.
And in connection with Bill number fourteen eighty-eight.
Yes.
I think it, I feel obliged to communicate to the council that the very strong sense of the Public Works Advisory Board, when we discussed this preserve at Y Mills, was that it would be fiscally irresponsible for the county to commit itself to take that project over prior to the completion of the preliminary environmental report, the PER. This council only recently, a few meetings ago, authorized a capital project for the completion of the preliminary environmental report. We are weeks or months away from having that PER. For you to authorize a capital project to upgrade or replace the wastewater treatment plant at the Preserve at Y Mills in the absence of the PER is like signing a blank check. That was a very strong sense of, unanimous sense of the members of the Public Works Advisory Board, that it would be premature to commit the county to spend an untold amount of money to replace a plant that has been in violation for some seventeen years. So we would urge you on behalf of the Public Works Advisory Board to defer action on this Bill number fourteen eighty-eight until you have in hand that we can evaluate a preliminary environmental report telling us what needs to be done and what it's going to cost. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Just as, and I, I know, I know Mr. Clark is here, and I, I know also Ms. Nagel's here with our finance officer as well. And to your point, Ms. Anderson, you're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. The council is waiting for that preliminary engineering report to come back to us. I believe RAO is going to take care of that. Mr. Clark is now in the seat. What this council will do, it hopefully will do tonight, is not going to spend a dime of any money. There's no money, and my finance officer's here to the right, there's no money set aside for this at this time. All this does is put this in the queue of capital projects to be done. And once we do get that report back, and once the council then appropriates funding for whatever we're going to do up there. So this doesn't spend anything this evening. It doesn't, it doesn't make us do anything. It just puts this capital project in its proper place so that when that time eventually does come, we can now act upon it. We need to have the appropriation, the bill, in order to do something later. You can't put the cart in front of the horse. We have to do this now in order to do something later. And Mr. Clark, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure thing. Just so the, the board, Mr. Anderson knows, as well as the county council, we actually have received, I guess, the MOU signed by the HOA. Mr. Phil Jackson, he signed that on June thirtieth of this year, sent that back to the county for execution for the MOU to do the PER. We currently have, I guess, tonight, later, within the county manager's report, my recommendation to award the PER to RAO Incorporated as part of another contract associated with the Ferry Point Project, wastewater treatment plant project. And again, I think, as Mr. Pack noted, this, this is a capital project, and the problem we would run into if we don't do the capital naval legislation now, if, if we were to move forward and to secure funding and whatnot, we would not have a capital project. We'd have to come back to the county council during the fiscal year, which then I think it requires a four-fifth majority, a supermajority, in order for us to have a, a capital project approved. So I think this is basically what we're trying to do now, and as Mr. Pack, you indicated, and I, you know, I agree, we would, we still have to go through the processes of getting the designs done, we have to go through the process of then bidding out the project, and we will also be working with the homeowners' association, because any debt associated with this will be paid for by the homeowners or the HOA Preserve at Y Mills. This would not utilize any, it would be a reimbursement of any funds that were used out of the general fund, but no general funds would be given to this project at all.
The other thing of note, you see these every year, not you, this is not you, this is in general. You see a whole long list of ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five different capital projects being authorized. None of them actually spend any money, as Mr. Pack said. I mean, this list is normal every year, the projects change, but there's a whole nother process for each and every one of these to go through before we actually spend money. But there's a timing thing that we, we put them in line, and then we go, continue the process on each and every one of these. So if that helps allay your concerns.
Ms. Nagel, you want to be heard at all on the finance end of this one?
No. Mr. Clark, could you stay for one second? So doesn't the, the cost fall back on the users when we do?
Yes, yes, yes. So when, when there's a debt service that we've established, that would then be paid for by the homeowners' association as part of their fee.
So they'll be paying the capital charge as well as they use, the, the using, the daily use of whatever they're flushing, so.
Okay. So the blank check that we'd be issuing, what doesn't, doesn't understand how that would work?
Yeah.
I'm confused.
Well, there is no.
There is no check.
There is no blank check.
The statement is not a correct statement. There is no blank check. We're not issuing anything tonight. We're just putting this in, in, in the lines of capital projects to be done at a later date. We're not spending any money tonight.
Right.
And, and just for clarification, we have not, we, we had to get the PER done, the preliminary engineering report done. Once we had that done, then we present that to the Maryland Department of the Environment, we'll then work with the Maryland Department of the Environment on the funding side. That then establishes what we will receive in grant funding, as well as what we will receive in loan funding. That loan funding would then be paid for by the HOA. So whatever that is amortized out at, you know, on a thirty-year basis, that would be incorporated as part of their user fee.
And to that point, Mr. Clark, that's a very, very important point that we need all here, is that if, if this is not in our capital, a, a, a project list, we can't go for funding.
Right.
To build it, or to improve it, whatever we're going to do. It has to be on the list, nor is for us to then go to the state to get money. Yes, Mr.?
So I, I was just going to say that the capital improvement program is a list of the fifteen bills that the council approves, and once they approve, they can't be executed for sixty days, and even after that point, they still have to go through a funding solution and all necessary approvals by council before moving forward.
Exactly.
So, so again, all this does is, it authorizes, authorizes the execution to tee it up, but then it requires, you know, the council's approval for any spending.
There's no dollar amount attached to it. Julie, am I correct? There's no, there's no, there's no dollar attached to this bill. One dollar or a million, there's no dollar attached to it.
Thank you, Clark. Appreciate you clarifying that. All right, we're still on the public hearing, so the next row, you guys have anything? Next row? Fourth row? In the back? Okay? All right, does anybody have anything else on these bills? Madam Secretary, will you please call the vote?
You're going to close the public hearing?
Or close the public hearing? Yep?
And then I'll make a motion to move all of them to third reader, but I believe we have to vote on them individually.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yep. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
I have no objection to Mrs. Price's motion to move Bill four, from, in succession, Bill fourteen seventy-four through Bill fourteen ninety-one to third reader this evening. That was second motion.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
We'll ask him for the third reader then.
Start reading, start, start reading is very important.
That's what I was getting ready to say. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of the bills into the record, and we'll, we'll go ahead and vote on it individually?
Bill number fourteen seventy-four.
I ask that so much be considered a reading of all fifteen bills.
No objection.
Bill number fourteen seventy-four, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen seventy-five, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen seventy-six, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen seventy-seven, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen seventy-eight, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen seventy-nine, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen eighty, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen eighty-one, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen eighty-two, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen eighty-three, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen eighty-four, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen eighty-five, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen eighty-six, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen eighty-seven, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen eighty-eight, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen eighty-nine, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen ninety, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill number fourteen ninety-one, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So that, that concludes the, uh, public hearing and, and the votes on all the bills, so let's, um, anything, counsel? We're good? Move on?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay? Good? Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is a discussion of application of the state discharge permit, in Trap. So, uh, Mr. Clark, you wanna come on up? McGeele, you wanna come up too? Okay. He might need some help.
No.
Thank you, Brad.
No problem. Again, counsel, uh, just through your information, if you have not heard, I mean, MDE has issued the tentative notice of, I guess, for the Trap wastewater treatment plant discharge permit, groundwater discharge permit. Ultimately, in that notice, they've indicated that the, um, I guess, you know, that we, you know, the county or citizens would need to make a formal written request to the Maryland Department of the Environment for, I guess, to, um, request a public hearing. So tonight, you know, what we're here to ask the council is to go ahead and submit a letter requesting a public hearing on the Trap, uh, the Trap's tentative determination of their draft discharge permit for the town of Trap's new facility. I believe that is Lakeside or Trap East.
Okay.
And, Mr. Clark, this comes with both your recommendation and the recommendation of the Public Works Advisory Board?
During the public, yes, there was.
That we request the hearing.
Yes, yes. And, you know, there are other groups that have requested a hearing as well, but we would like to do that separately.
That sounds, that sounds great. Do, do we have a, a motion?
Yes, have a motion.
Okay.
I think we do have a little discussion as well.
Okay. All right, do we have, do we have a second?
I would say.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we have a motion in a second.
Are you gonna have any discussion before you take the vote?
I can.
We appreciate it.
Okay, no problem. Go ahead.
How about you, Ms. Price, first?
Okay. Okay.
There's been a, a lot of information that is, um, coming, coming to light, um, and I think there's some valid concerns that have, that have been raised. Um, I know I've had some discussions with some members of the planning commission and, um, you know, some other people, um, and there is some information, um, that has been, you know, put out there with letters to the editor, and, um, and some, some of the concerns that have been brought to my attention that I, I would like the questions answered are, it, it, it's possible that reports were not given, um, from the town of Trap for, you know, what, again, what I read and with the M D, as per the MDE website, um, whether it's been updated or not, I would like some questions answered about why twenty-seven out of thirty were reporting as zero. That seems, uh, odd to me, so I would like to know if, uh, and this, I guess, would come up in the public hearing, um, as, you know, as a concern, and I think there's some groups that will raise those concerns. And then after we voted on this, uh, you know, the reports started coming back, and, you know, there's some information that maybe their discharge is higher than what it's supposed to be. So, um, is it true, though? I mean, I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't do anything with Resolution two-eight-one, but that ship has sailed. Is that correct? Because now it's incorporated into the plan?
Yes, ma'am. So at this point, we are now, this is the, related to the draft permit for the wastewater, the new wastewater treatment plant. So I think the questions have been raised, uh, both, I think, within the Public Works Advisory Board and citizens, that there has been concerns, uh, with the existing wastewater treatment plant, and if there are problems with that treatment plant, you know, and I think that's a question that would need to be answered by the Maryland Department of the Environment. You know, if there are issues with the existing wastewater treatment plant, you know, if you're now gonna try and connect those houses, you know, that are associated with the new development, is that gonna be a problem? I think that would be something that MDE would have to address. And then at the same time, the next question would be is, you know, on the, on the discharge permit, uh, as it relates to Resolution two-eight-one, uh, we require, or it was identified in that, that the total nitrogen discharge would be three milligrams per liter, the total phosphorus discharge would be point three milligrams per liter. Those have been identified within the permit. At the same time, is my understanding that the spray, uh, spray irrigation holding pond, which was sixty days, has been increased to seventy-five days, along with, uh, I, you know, I've got information back from the engineer, that they also have incorporated fourteen inches of rainfall within the spray irrigation holding pond, as well as they're maintaining a three feet of freeboard. So that, you know, I did get that information back.
Freeboard's not?
That, I just got information, I, I sent information to, uh, Rao Incorporated, and they sent that back to me today. So it's basically, I mean, I can share that with you.
Right. So what about those reports that are excess, in excess of the three and the point three? I mean, are we able to check on that, or is that something that we're just, you know, raising concerns at the public hearing?
Right now, the, the new plant, the new plant that's being talked about is at three and point three.
Right, I'm talking about the existing plant.
The existing plant. That would have to be raised, that, MDE's the regulatory authority on that, that would be a matter, I think, that would have to be addressed by MDE, so.
There's plenty of people, um, and I know counsel probably has comments, but since we have members of the Board of Public Works and the Planning Commission here, I would hope that if any of them want to come and address us, that we would allow that, since they, they kinda went through them before it got to us. So that's just a request that I have, once counsel makes their comments.
Just to clarify regarding Resolution two-eight-one, so once that was approved by the council in, in August of last year?
Right.
Under state law, that has to go on to MDE for final approval, which it did. MDE issued final approval of that in, I believe, November. So that now is part of the comprehensive water and sewer plan.
Correct.
So that's, and we're making sure that this draft permit is consistent with the plan, as I mentioned.
Right. So for those that are calling for us to rescind it, it doesn't appear that we can, doesn't mean that some of us don't have concerns, and that we'll try to get it addressed in front of MDE.
Correct. And that's, the, he, this hearing is an excellent opportunity to use that and some other critical comments.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. And, and I know we do have the attorney of record, Mr. Ryan Shawwater, here, uh, representing the Lakeside Development Group, and also the town of Trap as well, and this project. And to Mrs. Price's point, I don't know, I would extend the same courtesy to Mr. Shawwater, if he cared to, uh, to, to address any of those comments, I would certainly recommend to the table as well.
Right.
Us requesting the public hearing, you know, it, it's sort of like a performer. Anyone can request it, it doesn't really do anything, but just ask MDE for, for transparency in their findings of the tentative determination. It doesn't improve or worsen the situation at all. So, uh, requesting the, the public hearing, I'm sure if Shore River Keepers haven't, hasn't made the request, it probably will, any citizen can do, and make a request of, of MDE to hold, hold the hearing. So whether they get one or a hundred, it's, it's the same effect. It, it doesn't really do anything more or less. And so I certainly support the council making that request, as well as any other citizen as well. And, and to, and to some of the issues that have been floating around in, in the paper and through other media, um, you know, we've been at this for, for some time with the town of Trap, with our planning commission, our Public Works Advisory Board, uh, and other entities, um, and, and each time those issues that are been, that have been raised, they've been answered, and, and to my satisfaction. So, um, I know there's other things that have now crept up, um, regarding poor reports, and who's keeping reports, and what's on certain websites and so forth, um, and I'm sure there was, those things too are, are, are explainable. So, um, again, my, my comment regarding us submitting the letter is just that, it's, it's basically just a performance to go through, to ask them to do that, and it doesn't mean that we're against or for, uh, the project, it means that we're just asking MDE to be transparent with their findings, and, and that's all I have to say. Mr. Shaw, do you, do you care to be heard on any of the comments that have been made thus far?
Can the rest of the council go?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just asking if he, if he did, I'm not saying asking to take.
Well, let's, let's get to them in a few minutes, if that's okay. Mr. DeVilleo?
Oh, no, I, I don't really have any comments, I think I would reserve those for the public hearing.
I think my questions have been articulated here already, thank you.
Yep, yep. So, so I, I will, um, I will, um, open it up to, um, first of all, to the, the Planning Commission, if, if you guys would like to come up here.
Mr. Callahan, just, just for, for your information, as well as everybody here, as well as the general public, um, also, MDE's identified that July twenty-sixth, uh, written, they'd need to receive written comments by July twenty-sixth.
Okay, so I appreciate it, Mr. Clark.
And you, you said in your memo that you're working on reviewing the, and you're going to be preparing comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good, appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, so, uh...
No problem, just tell everybody who you are.
Okay, so I am chip counsel, I currently serve as chairman of the Talbot Planning, Talbot County Planning Commission.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
And I'm Lisa Gezzi, and I'm a member of the Planning Commission.
Yep. So, uh, our presence here is threefold. First, uh, we, we saw on the agenda the item where you're gonna be discussing this, and we wanted to hear what Mr. Clark had to say about the permit. Second is to tell you that as a commission, we have not discussed it, this at length. We are having a special meeting on Friday at two o'clock, uh, with the Acton County Attorney, to decide, you know, if we wanna take action or not. Third is to echo Commissioner Price's concerns, and I can assure you, as Talbot County Planning Commission Chair, that we are concerned about the new information regarding Lakeside Development. And we'd welcome the opportunity to work with you and the Public Works Advisory Board to resolve these issues. We would like to have a complete and thorough process, we're willing to do whatever it takes to assure that. My opinion is, this is the biggest project that we will see in Talbot County in our lifetimes. This is a big decision, we owe it to future generations to take our time and do it right. Thank you for your time. We yield the rest of my time to Commissioner Gezzi.
Well, uh, county council chairman Callahan and other county council members, um, as well as other planning commission members who are with us here this evening, um, Mike Stranhan and Bill Boycourt are sitting on the bench. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As new information has come to light, information that was not available during the planning commission's proceedings on the Trap Lakeside Manor last year, I ask that the county council remand the Trap matter, Resolution two-eight-one, back to the Planning Commission and the Public Works Advisory Board for reconsideration. The information that's been recently presented is confusing, complex, and potentially in conflict with what we heard in our hearings in the Trap matter. Had the Planning Commission heard all the relevant information at that time, we may have made a different decision. It's essential that we get this right, as chairperson counsel has said. Raw sewage coming from the new development must be managed property, properly for the health and the safety of all future lakeside residents, the Trap community, and those that live downstream of and close to the treatment plant. We cannot allow ourselves in this community to rush this decision or make on the basis of incomplete and inconsistent information. We're not prepared, prepared to make a decision like that today, nor can we afford the economic and the health disasters like those that have occurred in the Y Preserve and Mardingham. Being respectful of all the members of our collective communities, present and future, we must take the time to understand these complex details thoughtfully and carefully. This will enable us to make the best decision for the residents of Talbot County. As chairperson, uh, of our Planning Commission Council has told, has said to you, we want to work closely with you and the Public Works Advisory Board for the long-term benefit of the residents of our community and MDE. In conclusion, it's vitally important, and I respectfully request that the county council remand Resolution two-eight-one back to the Planning Commission and the Public Works Advisory Board to hear the matter again and recommend further action. Thank you for your time.
Stay right there. Mr. Thomas, can you, can you comment on that, please?
Yes, as I said earlier, so the, the way the process works under state law is that the, the, uh, an amendment to the comprehensive water and sewer plan, the county refers it to, in this case, the Planning Commission. Planning Commission looks at it, determines if it meets certain factors under the land use article, uh, also goes to the Public Works Advisory Board for comment as well, which it did in this process. The Planning Commission by a three-two vote, found it was consistent with the factors The Planning Commission by a 3-2 vote found that it was consistent with the factors that it had to look at, comes to the council, the council approves it. Then under state law, it has to go to MDE for final approval. MDE approved it and it became part of the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. So at that point, the only way to, there's nothing to remand or rescind. It has to go through, the only way to do it would be to amend the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan and revert it back to its pre-281 status.
So there's nothing to send back to you. I mean, we've read this over and over and over again in emails, do we send it, do we send it back? There's nothing that we can send back to you.
However, you can certainly go to that public hearing and say to MDE what you've said to us.
Right, that's what, that's what we're making.
It is now part of the comprehensive plan.
That's important because maybe they will not make it part of their final plan. If all, you know, a lot of research needs to continue on and we need to make sure we have all the facts, we need to make sure MDE has all the facts, and I think that they need to understand that you feel like you didn't have all of those facts to make that decision. Again, I think we're stuck at the moment, but there's a hearing coming up in a couple weeks.
And the distinction between Mardingham and the Preserve at Y Mills and this particular plant should be noted that this is an incorporated town. Trap is an incorporated town, different than Mardingham, which was outside of the town of St. Michael's and of course, the Preserve at Y Mills, which is, which is not incorporated as well. This is an incorporated plant that they have their own sovereignty. So the citizens and the Trap Council, just like we do, they have a comprehensive plan that they submit to MDE, we do as well as a county. So MDE has the authority whether or not they're going to permit the building of this wastewater treatment plant to this, to this entity, which is a, an incorporated town. So I've heard people bring this up before regarding the county taking over the Mardingham and what you just heard for us this evening as we're trying to look at, trying to help out the situation up at the Preserve at Y Mills. This is an incorporated town. It's a different animal than those other two situations.
And if you remember, I asked Matt Pluta who he would want running that facility, and he did not want the neighborhood to be running it. He liked that a municipality was it, and he actually complimented, or complimented Ray Clark on his ability to run a facility.
Yeah.
So that's not really a fair comparison.
No, yeah.
With all due respect, I'm going to go back to, this is an important decision. Issues have been raised. There have been issues raised with the existing treatment plant at Trap. I probably shouldn't say this, but MDE and the county were supposed to be watching over the Preserve at Y Mills for the last 15 years. So, again, when I look in the mirror and when I talk to my kids and grandkids in so many years, and this happens or not, I want to know that we did everything we did in the correct order and made the best decision possible.
I agree completely with you. And I was furious when I found out that, that the Preserve and Y Mills, they were just forging numbers and duplicating the exact same numbers and MDE didn't review that. And then I think about the watchdog agencies that we have with the Shore River Keepers measuring water quality, and that didn't find it. And that was a catastrophic failure, in my opinion. And I, that thankfully, it's not as contaminated and as dangerous of an environment as it could be, but there's plenty of potential at the Preserve and Y Mills. I have a lot of faith in MDE, even after they did that to us. But, and I really give you a lot of respect for coming to us and asking for this back to you, and I would love that if there was an opportunity or a group that we could give it back to, but it just seems like we've made the steps forward and now we have to, we really have to hold MDE accountable and watch over it. And I'm hoping that all those items can be addressed at the public hearing, because it is valuable, important information that needs to be addressed and brought out, and it would be beneficial to hear how they're going to, what differences they would do.
But I don't understand why we don't have any control over our own county and why there isn't any recourse with allegations that have been made, which we don't know whether or not those allegations are true, but they seem very convincing, otherwise we wouldn't be up here. And we're concerned, and I can't imagine that there's any, there's no recourse within the state to take back a resolution. That, that makes no sense to me, and hopefully we'll be able to understand, we have not been given any information by our legal counsel. We, we plan to meet with him on Friday. We had our meeting last Wednesday and we've not been able to schedule a meeting until Friday. It just makes no sense to me that we don't have the recourse in our own community when we've not, when it seems that we've not been given all the information to make a decision that may very well have changed based on the information that could have allegedly been withheld.
I'm looking forward to you guys meeting with counsel and getting some legal advice, because we had some.
Yep.
And I found it very beneficial.
But if you're.
So I would, I would make sure that you have all of your, your information before making any snap judgments.
But if you're furious that the Preserve at Y Mills reported the same numbers for 15 years, then you should be furious that it's possible the Trap didn't report numbers for 27 out of 30 months, and that question needs to be asked and answered. They're not there, so where did they go? And that's important.
I heard about that three hours ago, so I haven't had any opportunity to review.
Right, exactly. I've only had the information myself 24 hours, you know, since the weekend. That's, that's, that's a violation, so something's not quite right here, and MDE needs to know it, and they need to be held accountable, because again, maybe they can't watch every little project. We are, you know, small projects in a small county, but you know, they, they need to be aware and it needs to be, you know, investigated.
And again, I want to reiterate, we have not discussed this or taken any formal action as a Planning Commission. We're waiting till after Friday, but we did want to get on the record as concerned, willing to work with you, Public Works, to make sure we get it right.
Well, we appreciate. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there's any formal action the Planning Commission can take. I mean, I think that, you know, basically, you know, to request a hearing, which this council is about to do, ask MDE to have a public hearing, again, whether they get one request or 100 requests, it really doesn't, doesn't make too much of a difference. But to Ms. Gesi's point, and I was just bringing this up in the back with the county manager and Mr. Thomas, I think you all should have an attorney assigned to you. I know, I know the Board of Appeals has in the past, but that's something that I was just, no more than an hour ago, saying that you all need to have an attorney with you that you can run these things through and not wait till the 11th hour. So hopefully that's something we can get rectified.
Yeah, we would appreciate that.
Give you the legal support that you need.
Mr. Leisher.
So, I'm not sure if this is a question for Mr. Thomas or if this is better directed to Mr. Clark, but does the, the MDE permit that this hearing will be the subject of impact the ability of, of the project to connect the first phase houses at Lakeside to the existing Trap wastewater treatment plant, or does that permit impact only the ones beyond that first phase?
I think that would be the best answer, Mr. Clark.
I think at this point, the, I think what Trap's proposing to do was to connect, I think, the first 150 houses to the existing wastewater treatment. Now, if there are issues with that wastewater treatment plant, which would have to be addressed by MDE, that decision would have to be made by MDE. The public hearing that we're talking about is associated with the new wastewater treatment plant and that permit. The question I think becomes, and again, I just highlight this, that what could happen is let's say they can't go to the existing wastewater treatment plant because it's not made in a permit or something of that nature, and MDE says you cannot build and add to that treatment plant at this time.
Well, they're not asking to build onto it, they're simply asking to use existing capacity.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They would have residential houses that would be adding to the number of houses already connected. So they would be adding to the flow rate of that plant. What could happen is they could proceed with the wastewater treatment plant, the new treatment plant, and then ultimately pump and haul if that was necessary. So, one of the problems I think that the developer and, you know, and engineering and the environmental world, you run into issues when you have a small facility, you've got to have wastewater coming in so that you can feed the bugs and operate the wastewater treatment plant so it's operating at high performance. That's what we would have to have. I mean, if you were starting to build houses, you're more than likely going to have to plug up the manholes and pump and haul out of those manholes until you have sufficient flow to go into that wastewater treatment plant that then can survive and then operate properly. I think what they were trying to do is if it was prior to that, they would, instead of, let's say, pumping and hauling, they were hoping to get the existing wastewater treatment plant so they could have sufficient flows that they can divert back to the new plant that would then allow them to operate the new plant. So that was, that was their intent in this phasing concept.
Just, do they need any action from MDE in order to be able to do that?
I think, what I would anticipate for the new treat, for the new discharge permit, that's going to be a question for MDE, whether or not they would be allowed, if there are permit issues associated with the existing wastewater treatment plant that discharges to the Trap Creek. If there's a moratorium put on, then the town of Trap would not be allowed to do any, you know, issue any more building permits or whatnot that would go to that plant. That would be an action by MDE, not the county.
But fundamentally, their ability to connect those first, whatever it is, 120, 140 houses, is from the, this council's amendment of its, of its Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan that awarded S1 to that portion of the development.
Correct.
So if, if this council were of a mind to undo that action until these questions were addressed, could, and now this, this may be shifting over to a legal question, what would be the procedure and the timing for this council if it requested that, and whether that would impact this review process for MDE? Are these simply parallel processes? If we were to amend the, today's, if we were today to ask to amend the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by new resolution to essentially undo the S1 status, if that were to be done in a de novo fashion, of starting over here, and obviously there's a timeline for that to run.
Correct. And I don't, and I don't know offhand whether the council even could on its own initiate an amendment or whether that would have to be done by the property owner through the town of Trap under the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan when the prop, when the property's located municipality has to go through the municipality and then.
Well, I don't think they're going to be doing that.
No, exactly.
So let me, I have a question for Mr. Clark. You said that.
That's my last question.
So you said that the public hearing is for the new wastewater treatment plant that's going to have the spray irrigation for the long-term stuff, and it's not for connecting these to these first hundred or so homes temporarily to the existing Trap plant?
Correct.
But they, but then you.
I wouldn't, but my, my point was, is that this is associated with the new treatment plant, but I think if there's concerns, that you could raise those concerns to MDE associated with the existing wastewater treatment.
That they might not allow the connection?
They may not, or ask them to look into that and provide you with a report as to what those issues are. I mean, you noted, I guess, that there's these zeros. I mean, I can't tell you if they're zeros, they're non-detected, I don't know what they are. I don't know what, what helps report.
Would you please go and look yourself?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm just, but I'm just saying that that's probably a question that has to go back to MDE, and I think it would be a question that you could raise, in my opinion, at that public hearing, so that they could respond back to that, because this is part of the phasing at that new development, so I would anticipate that you could make the request on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just because we're all together, would it be beneficial for us to schedule a meeting with the Town of Trap similar to what we did with Easton?
It might be good to have somebody from MDE there that could address some of these concerns. I feel like we keep talking about MDE, but it'd be good to have somebody from MDE there.
Mr. Callahan, members of the council, I didn't come today intending to speak, I came straight out of the field and didn't expect this, this evening. So I, I would like to make a couple of brief comments. The first thing I'd like to make very clear for the record is that I represent the developer, I represent Trapeast Holdings Business Trust, I don't represent the town of Trap. Lindsey Ryan represents the town. I understand that there are questions and concerns, and I applaud all of you and the Planning Commission for your interest and your attention and focus on concerns, but I want to highlight, the concerns that are raised are based on allegations in a letter to the editor. And so I, I would urge all of you, before you take any action, to make sure you have facts. And I understand that the Town of Trap is preparing a response to the county council to address those, those allegations, and I'm very comfortable, based on what I've heard, that, that you will be comfortable with the response as well, that, that there are not longstanding violations. I'm also very comfortable with every single fact and statement that I made to you and to the Planning Commission. Frankly, I'm, my credibility in this community is more important than any individual project or any individual client, I take a great deal of pride in that. So the suggestion that information was withheld from this council or the Planning Commission making any decisions is absolutely untrue. And, and we're very comfortable with the facts of all of this project, the facts associated with the permit, the facts associated with Resolution 281, and happy to, to stand on those to answer your questions and to make sure those, those concerns are addressed. And I think I'll leave it at that. I mean, I understand there are questions, we welcome the questions. I want you to make sure you have answers to the questions before you take actions, because I think the, the facts are what should drive your decisions. Thank you.
Can I have a question for Mr. Anderson? Well, the, the Public Works Advisory Board, what was their recommendation on it? It was five to zero against it, was it not?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The Public Works Advisory Board was unanimously opposed to the council's adoption of Resolution 281.
Could you share us the highlight of why?
We, we were urging the council to, rather than having two bites, one big, large northern part of the property redesignated as S1 immediately, to have five bites corresponding to the phases of the development that had been presented by the developer, so that every few years, as the development progressed, this council would have an opportunity to take a second look, to see how the development is going, to be sure that the wastewater treatment plant and spray irrigation system were working satisfactorily, and then to have basically S1 designations in advance of each phase of the development, five phases, not two big bites, which is the way, Mr. Showalter came up with a proposal in advance of a council meeting back in 2019, I think, and drew a line across a map and said, how about this? And everybody said, oh yeah, that's phasing, let's do that. And that didn't seem to be sufficiently phased to the Public Works Advisory Board.
Did the Planning Commission have that same question about five phases opposed to two? No.
And again, and I'll just say once again for the record, that we are not the, the parents of the Town of Trap. Trap is an incorporated town, they're recognized by the state of Maryland as such, they have their rights to operate, they have the taxing authority as an incorporated town, as well as Easton does and St. Michael's. We are hopefully a partner with the Town of Trap. We've met many times with the Town of Trap, as council president, myself and Mr. Hollis, Mr. Clark met repeatedly with the Town of Trap over this development, to try to move it towards a place where it was amenable and would be phased in. But to say that they have to come back to us every two or three years, in my opinion, was a bit demeaning to an incorporated town. It just showed a lack of consideration, a lack of respect for them. We would not ask Easton to do that, we would not ask St. Michael's to do that, and to ask Trap to do that is demeaning. So.
Mr. Pack, excuse me, I fail to see how it's demeaning for the county, for the county council to maintain control of its Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan.
But the, the, the plan is, is incorporating what the towns want to do within their jurisdiction, not to tell them what to do, is to incorporate what the towns want to do within their jurisdiction.
What I will say, one more, one more thing on that, that this is such a unique situation where, I've always said the annexation law is a little bit weird. I don't think that the annexation law was ever meant to take a town or an area of a few hundred and multiply it by 10 times. You know, you think of annexation as just a little bit at a time, you know, the outskirts get a little bit bigger or whatever, and if it's contiguous, but to go from a couple hundred people, however many the population of Trap is, to 2,501 homes, an average of two people, to add 5,000 people, and the load that that is on the entire county, I do think that we have jurisdiction, I don't think it's demeaning at all to make sure everything's working, because if you're adding 5,000 people to an area, as you said, Mr. Counsel, this is the largest project we'll ever see in our lifetime. I'm not stating whether it's a good or bad, maybe it's too big, but I think that's where some of this pushback has become, that you're annexing something 10 times or so larger, maybe 20 times larger, and I've always had a funny feeling about these, this annexation law and how this went down. That's past history, but what we can do is make sure that this is done right and that it grows in such a way that we protect and make sure that it's, you know, growing in such a way that doesn't harm any other citizens of Talbot County. So I, I disagree respectfully that it's demeaning to them. If there's five phases of the project, it makes, you know, it makes perfect sense. But I just want a clarification on why your recommendation was what it was. So thank you.
I just wanted to recognize what the commissioners back here, did you?
I was going to.
One of the Trap commissioners.
No.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
I'm, I'm sorry. An ex commissioner.
One more.
Counsel. Go ahead, Dirk. Yeah, yeah, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dirk Bartlett, 7905 Bloomfield Road. I wanted to come speak, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so, about this situation with the Town of Trap. I think you guys made a very difficult decision on 281, and you were relying on information, and I heard the testimony as, as these revelations came out, I took a look back at some of the hearings that you all had and looked very carefully at the questions that were asked, et cetera, and I don't think you've been treated fairly. I think the Town of Trap has been playing fast and loose with the statistics. If you were, you were going to give them an S1 designation, and if you knew that that plant at that time was operating 200 or 300% over what its affluent regulation was, I guarantee you, you would think twice about giving them an S1 designation. It's that simple. It's that fundamental. The Town of Trap, I realize you have to respect a jurisdiction, they're an independent jurisdiction, but you are not, you were not given the information that you should have been given about the, the operation of that plant. And that, if there's any way legally, and I don't know the legalities of how far this thing has gone, but you are a board of health. With COVID-19, you had your board of health hats on and you did what you had to do in a very difficult situation. This is no different. This is no different.
Okay, counsel, let's move on. Now what we have is a motion to the second, Madam Secretary, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, so now we've got, we need an update from Parks and Rec. Is Preston, is he out there?
Is he out there?
Yeah. Come on, Preston. You know.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. You ready?
Another lighter toss.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Liam, where's the playground?
Oh, yeah. Guess we're starting off with that right away. Just, I want to say thank you for letting me come in, talk about some of the stuff that we're doing in Parks and Recreation. COVID hit Parks and Recreation the same as it did most of the other businesses, we had to shut our doors throughout the pandemic. We were able to still do a little bit of the meetings with, county council had their meetings out at the community center for a while, before we went to Zoom meetings, and we just kind of gradually let people back in the doors as the governor allowed us to, first to 25%, then 50%, and then, you know, just getting things put back that Strangely enough, Parks and Landings really didn't see the hit of the coronavirus, it actually pushed most of the people outside. So if, you know, it's kind of a, a national concept that Parks and Landings were one of the, the two biggest users over this whole pandemic, so. So we've seen that, both good and bad, you know, with some of our parks and landings here, that some of them do have maybe too many people at times. But, you know, it's kind of just, that's the way things work. What I wanted to do tonight is just talk a little bit about some of the things in 2021. I think Taubet County Parks and Recreation has rebounded quite nicely. I want to first start out by saying I don't think any of that would have been able to be done without the staff that I have underneath of me. We have a relatively small staff for the amount of things that we do. For example, we, right out of the gates, right after the COVID regulations were lifted, we did a youth spring field hockey clinic outside. We had over 100 girls, which is our largest clinic that we ever had. Currently, right now, we are running three clinics inside. We've got soccer, basketball, and volleyball. As Mr. DeVilio can tell, can attest to, you know, we had our park meeting last Thursday. You pulled up to the parking lot. It was full. Not sure, most people weren't sure what was going on, but we had indoor soccer going on. We had indoor dance going on, along with some of the other things. So just a lot of different things that we, you know, are getting back into the swing of things. Swimming pools last year were closed due to COVID, unfortunately. This year, they are now open. We kind of had a blessing in disguise this year. We actually didn't get enough staff apply to even open our doors for the pools this year. We actually only had four lifeguards apply for both pools. Luckily, Coastline Pools stepped up. They'd actually approached us before about possibly running our pools. So they are running our pools this year. They are doing a fantastic job. The pools, from what I've heard, have never been cleaner. They've never been managed better. Angela Lane spends more time at the pool than I think she's ever has before, whether it be aerobics or lap swimming or anything. So she's even said how well they are as far as facilities go. Along with that, you know, we still have adult lessons, children's lessons, lap swim, aerobics, lifeguard training, and things like that. One of the other things that we've tried to do a more focus on is roller skating out at the community center. It kind of went with a big boom when we first got roller skating out there. And then with a lot of things recreational, it takes kind of a dip. What we've done this year is really kind of focus on, rather than just opening up as public roller skating, we've actually focused more on marketing it for specific days. What we've been doing is every other Friday night, just have public skating, roller skating. We actually had it two years ago when we did the very first one. There were over 300 people showed up to roller skate, which is good and bad, because, A, we don't have 300 pairs of roller skates, but we still had 300 people show up. So, you know, it's there. It's something that we just continually build on. The other big thing that was nice this year is summer camp. So our summer camp really took a hit last year just with COVID, but it was also more so with the stipulations with the state health department. And what I mean by that is, you know, rooms had to be only used by one group. So you couldn't share rooms. You couldn't share counselors. You couldn't... There were no field trips allowed. There were no going off the grass. So it was really, you know, it was really stringent upon what could be done. This year, there were still some things that were like that, that were put in place by the state. We weren't even full. We didn't fill up our first week of camp, which was a little alarming. However, they then lifted some of the stipulations. We're allowed to do field trips. We're allowed to co-mingle with other groups. So we have now booked out every single week of camp. We're at full capacity, and we actually have about 20 kids on the waitlist. Surprisingly, we still did our sponsorship drive, the same as we've done in the past. We weren't sure how that would take off as far as with the Corona and, you know, businesses losing money. We actually, we have 45 sponsors this year, which is almost 10 more than last year. So I think it just is an attest to see that there are business owners that see the importance of Parks and Recreation in the community. We put a new software system in place, something that is a lot more user-friendly than the previous one. And we've done a new web redesign. So again, a new look to our website, which should be much more vibrant and easier to navigate through. One of the big things that we've noticed throughout the pandemic is our room rentals have actually exploded. I'm not sure if that's because some of the other places that we're doing room rentals weren't doing them with the COVID stipulations. What we did is we followed the guidelines from the governor, meaning, you know, we limited the number of people that would be able to rent a certain room based on the 25, 50% room capacity. So what it did is it pushed some people maybe to larger rooms than they really wanted. But unfortunately, that was what we had to work with, because that's what the state was going for. The other big thing is we worked with the health department and FEMA to do vaccination clinics out at the community center. It was every Friday for about five and a half months. I think there were times where 700 people came through the door to get vaccinated out at the community center. The other, you know, moving on, landing ramp permits. We've actually sold out of our permits for the first time ever, so we've had to buy more permits. And I guess that goes back to that same thing with, you know, a lot more people are doing things outside than they are inside. And I think COVID really put the focus on that. And also, Mr. Peck, we, you know, we're putting the final touches on the master plan for the Frederick Douglass Park. You know, we're, hopefully get that here, you know, straightened out. I think we're coming to council in a couple of weeks with that. And the other thing, you know, more personal to me, the engineering plans are in the reviewing process for the community center. Hopefully, within 45 days, we can get some kind of bid put out for the expansion out at the community center. And then lastly, we successfully hosted public skating, the youth hockey, the youth figure skating, our lessons, our Jamie Webb, all the local high schools, without any COVID outbreak through the entire ice season. So...
So do you think, if I may, do you think that this new expansion of the community center will actually have sewer?
It will have sewer. Sewer is actually groundbreaking. There is a chance. Ray and I are going to need to figure out a maze to get into the building, I think, to start with, though. It does. The sewer, they're actually, the sewer is set to begin out there, and I believe the beginning of September.
You should have left with that.
After the last one, I figured I'd put that one down further.
September?
September.
That's when it begins. Hopefully, we're getting done by the end of the year.
Let me write that down, so I can ask, I can ask in October how it's going. All right, okay. All right. That's all I have.
Ms. Price?
I'm good. It's nice to, nice to... Mr. DeVilio, thank you for inviting Mr. Pepper to come. And, you know, we get updates from several departments, but sometimes we don't. And so I think that this is really good to get it, you know, at least one, if not, you know, two. It means, I think it's seasonal. And so I do appreciate hearing everything that's going on out there and all that you do, you know, especially through COVID, but all the time, to give the citizens of our community places to go, but especially the kids to have good, healthy things that don't have to do with video games and all of that, to get them outside and active. And it's really important for not only their physical health, but their mental health as well. So it's a very important department, so thank you.
And I will send a serious note since Ms. Price, kind of, so... But, I mean, just listening to his report, it just shows all the different branches that Parks and Recs are involved with, you know, from the Douglas Park in the north end of the county to your two pools that you operate, to the ice skating, and then the roller skating on Friday nights. And then you do a daddy-daughter skate on the wintertime. So it just shows that, you know, the involvement of Parks and Recs across different avenues and then all the different ball fields that you also manage as well. So, you know, my hat off to you, and I think, you know, you came on board with the county. You were tasked to make the community center a revenue-positive place. And I think you've been working tirelessly to do that, bringing in different vendors into the community center, whether it be gun shows, or flower shows, or home shows. So I think that you've been really creative in doing that and as you make sure that the landings are being properly managed and kept. And there was some situation with that many years ago about the shape and the aesthetics of our landings. And you jumped on that and made sure that the boaters and the recreational users had a place that was very congenial for them to use. So again, I just want to say on a serious note, yeah, hats off to you and all the things that you're doing, really.
Thank you. Well, I always think it's good that the director of Parks and Rec puts on a necktie once a year. But no, I really wanted to bring him in, just to thank him for all the hard work and let the council know all the hard work that he did. Many departments had to adapt and change. But, you know, if you're a finance department and you're collecting... But there's some changes that are much more just technology-based, whereas, as Preston said, with staff and bringing people in and then the changes of having the vaccination clinics that were out there. There was a lot of work that he had to go through to get the building safe, to make it secure, to just convince people to come out there, to keep people safe when they are there, and then to expand all the programs, shutting the pools down. I remember when that discussion first came out, how difficult that discussion was, that we were still at the, "Well, we want people to be outside, but then who wants to do CPR right now?" kind of thing, and, you know, how that's going to work. So I was really impressed with him for all of those changes. But also, with my kids playing hockey, I had the opportunity to go around and see different ice rinks and really, really see how he was doing to the competition. And the things that I saw people do in the name of safety was just incorrect. But it was safer at the ice rink. And it was an activity where kids were actually able to get out. And those were the only kids that they saw at that time. And the mental health that they were going through, the struggles that I saw in the kids, and then getting to see them come out to a field hockey camp and see their friends outside, that was a true blessing to the community. And I don't think that any of the Parks and Rec staff ever recognized how vital they are until you are told over and over again that you're helping the mental health of kids. You're really shaping them. You're helping them lose games and see what that's like, as well as win, and how to be friends. And I've said many times, when you go out and see a youth soccer game here, you're going to hear several different languages. And you're going to see the whole community right there on that soccer field. But as we go forward and see the adapt, and as well, and step onto the gymnasium that we're adding, it's, I've enjoyed watching Mr. Pepper really grow with that facility and raise some revenue and make it such a great center for this community. Why Comico County started to put some numbers together for an ice rink fell through. They recognize how expensive that was and how lucky we are to have it. You know, as well as all the different fields that we have around, we don't have one central sports complex here. You know, we've got fields down at Perry Cabin and St. Michael's, all the way out to Cordova. We have tennis courts in Cordova. Does anybody know that? They're not getting used much, you know. And then we're going to hear a little bit later on with a couple more programs that he's growing with the pickleball and adjusting the fields for Bermuda grass and things like that, just to really enhance the programs, make sure that they're stable, they stay strong year-round. And I'm just really impressed with all the work that he's done. And I don't think he gets the thank you as often as he should. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the earlier answers to my questions. Preston, I would be on board with everybody here that you are a huge part of this community. I mean, when that place was built, '79 or '78, you know, all of a sudden, me and Maris kids, we sort of grew up there. So like Mr. DeVilio said, that community center is a really heart of Taubet, a vision for kids to remember. You know, I visioned when we went there for Friday nights for skates, you know, skating and stuff like that. So what you're doing and what you're representing is huge. And I really appreciate, you know, all the hard... You know, we kid around a lot, and to tell you the truth, you get a lot of flack, a lot of comments, you know. And, but it's, at the end of the day, it all gets worked out at the end of the day, you know. And, you know, we try to satisfy a lot of people. You know, we go from one end of the county to the other to tillman, and there's always an issue every day. But at the end, at that, but, you know, you're capable of handling it, and staff is capable of handling it. You know, the county manager seems like he's on top of things when it comes to a bigger problem, you know, and I appreciate that, Clay. I really do, you know. And it takes a whole team, you know, and we end up figuring it out and moving forward. But I really do want to thank you for all the hard work that you do and your staff. That's for sure.
Thank you.
Because sometimes you do need a pat on the back, like Mr. DeVilio said, and you definitely deserve it. Okay. Anybody else?
Would it be okay to bump his county manager items up while he's sitting there?
He can come back.
There's some more flack for you. Thank you.
I would, I would take the opportunity as well, just to thank Preston. You know, what a lot of people don't realize is that, unlike maybe many other jurisdictions, if there's an issue down at Fayburn or Black Walnut Point, you'll see him out there emptying a trash can, or moving this, or moving that.
Right.
He's a working department head. And, you know, he, what is amazing to me, frankly, is all that he talked about is with a skeleton staff and a lot of volunteers from the community, of which he pulls together. So this is your compliment for the next few months.
Mark that one down with the sewer line.
Write that down, time and date on that one. Mentioning Black Walnut Point, now that we have a uniformed officer on that location, have you seen the complaints go down as far as neighbors and their complaints?
I think the complaint, I don't, I don't think the usage is quite as heavy as it was last year. So I think it's not quite, you know, as bad as it was last year.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll be, I'll be back.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, let's cut Mr. Murtaugh up here, because the next thing on the list is the county consideration of traffic advisory committee recommendations as requested for temporary road closure through Bridge Branch Road for the Chesapeake Bay Balloon Festival for, on the July 30th through August 1st at certain times. So do you want to walk us through that, please?
Certainly.
Welcome.
Good evening. So I'm here speaking for the Traffic Advisory Committee, which consists of Sheriff Gamble, Warren Edwards, Road Superintendent, Brian Lecates, Acting Director of Emergency Services, and myself, representing the county engineer. So again, it's the Chesapeake Bay Balloon and Wine Festival. That's, as you said, at the end of the month here. And so we've discussed it, and we're recommending to you to close Three Bridge Branch Road between Cordova Road and Old Cordova Road on those three days from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And that closure would really be at the discretion of the sheriff's office. They have deputies, they'll have deputies there during those times. And that would give them the ability to close the road or adjust traffic flow as need be to deal with the attendees.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Let's open it up for discussion. Now, Mr. Peck?
No, so I'm assuming all of the participants will be, have to be in and parked before the 4:00 p.m. road closure? In the park on the grounds there, correct?
Correct. So I think the idea is, is that the closure isn't so much to have no traffic on the road, but the ability to close it in different directions. So for example, there, I think their gate, the gates are open from 2:00 to 9:00 for the event on those three days. And so based on past history, most of the traffic comes later, after 4:00, because most of the events are in the evening that are popular. So what ordinarily happens is, is that the, when people are coming to the facility, they may have to temporarily close a lane or things of that nature. But more importantly is, when the thing's over with, there's a mass exodus, and that allows them to close it to through traffic and allow everybody to use both lanes in one direction, for example. And likewise, there's parking on both sides of the road for this event. And so included in this is the ability to, you know, direct traffic for pedestrians to get back and forth across the road in a safe manner. So, but to answer your question, there will be traffic on the road. It just won't be typical through traffic.
It's typical. It's for access, right, as opposed to through traffic?
Correct. Exactly.
Are you busing? Are you using bus services as they did previously?
No. So they've, they actually, the event has grown to both sides of the road more so now. So they have, I believe it's 3,000 parking spaces on site.
That was kind of a nightmare, right, when they used the Ag Center for parking?
It was difficult. Exactly. So this way, everything's right, self-contained. So in that regard, it eliminates that whole coordination effort.
So if you're going, if you're going on site, I guess you are particularly, so I'm going to the event, they'll let you in for the event between those hours?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So your recommendation is that we go ahead and close it between those hours on those three days?
Yes, sir.
Was there a change in the requirement for the people directing traffic?
So, yes. So they had a rodeo event this past spring. And in that case, they, it was a smaller event, so the need for the sheriff's department to be there wasn't as great. And in that case, we required that anybody that was basically in the county road directing or controlling traffic were Maryland State Highway, had, had Maryland State Highway flagger certifications, which is traffic directing, and then also a, a traffic manager on site, which again is another Maryland State Highway certification, actually it's a national certification, but it's consistent with state highway. In this, this event will still require that for those hours where the law and sheriff's office is not there to control traffic.
Is that a certification that all volunteer firefighters have?
Not all. So for that rodeo event, they, they used, I believe it was the Hillsborough Queen Anne Fire members, and they, they all got the certification. It's like a few-hour course type thing. So they, they received that certification for that previous event. I suspect they'll be using a lot of the same folks. If not, it would be the same situation where they just get them certified. It's actually a, I believe it's an online course to get that flagger certification.
Ms. Price?
Okay.
I'm going to be with her.
Okay.
I'll say.
Madam Secretary, call the vote, please.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Good job.
Okay, you're up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Council President. Members of council, your county manager report for this evening. We do have some requests of you to appoint to boards and commissions. The first one is for the Economic Development Commission. We are asking your support to appoint for the town of Oxford, actually, the town of Oxford is requesting the appointment of James Giaramello to the Economic Development Commission.
Move.
Second.
We got a motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
All right.
And the second one is for the Tourism Board. The town of Oxford is requesting the reappointment of Captain Judy Bixler to the Talbot County Tourism Board.
I'll make that motion and also mention that she has been the chair of the Maryland Tourism Board for several years, so we better keep her in place.
Okay, we got a motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
All right.
Okay, the next item I have, I'm going to ask Ray Clark to come up. We're requesting, the request from the Department of Public Works is the award contract for bid number twenty zero four, which is request for proposals engineering design service Ferry Point Marina Waste Water Treatment Plant trap in Talbot County, Maryland, and amendment number one to conduct a preliminary edu, preliminary engineering report to be done by Rao Corporation as an amendment to that contract. The county engineer will explain, explain in detail and is available for more questions.
Counsel, we did have, I guess, you know, with Rao doing the Ferry Point Waste Water Treatment Plant, which is an MBR wastewater system, or E and R, enhanced nutrient removal wastewater treatment plant. Basically, the proposed plant that we're looking at, at the Preservate Y Mills, would also be a E and R type wastewater treatment plant. So what we're looking at trying to do is standardize those plants. The idea here is to actually have Rao, who is doing the design for Ferry Point, then ultimately working on the P E R, they'll look at that selection, if, you know, and then ultimately, we'd like to basically consult, or I guess, standardize those operations. If the county's taking over those operations, have them standardized with this one plant versus having multiple plants. So the recommendation here is to basically move forward, I guess, to amend the Ferry Point contract, engineering services contract to, for eighteen thousand dollars to have the Rao Incorporated complete the preliminary engineering report for the Preservate Y Mills. And as I said earlier, the homeowners association has executed the memorandum of understanding. Ultimately, they would pay the county back that eighteen thousand dollars if we did not move forward with a funding package that was associated with M D E and whatnot.
So I wanted to, go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
I'm going to do the motion in a second, then I can ask a question.
So move.
Second. So that the public is aware, when Rao Incorporated was awarded the Ferry Point project, that was bid out.
That is correct.
And so I just don't want people to think that he's automatically going to get, you know, the contracts and things like that, because I think everything should be bid out. But I just wanted to remind the public and make sure that that was correct, that it was bid out for Ferry Point, and we're adding on, we're adding this one on.
Correct. Yes. And they were the low bidder on the Ferry Point RFP for the engineering services for that project. Yes, ma'am?
And I would say, piggybacking off Mrs. Price's point, to your credit, Ray, really forward-thinking to have the standards of these plants be identical, so that when your guys are operating, if you have to move guys from plant to plant, because it is, it is my hope and desire that once the water preserve improvements are done, that the county take ownership of that plant, and therefore, when your guys have to go from the Ferry Point operation up to the water preserve, they know their way around, that all the systems are not identical, but it's very, very similar, so that they can continue doing that work. So it's probably a good forward-thinking idea, your part, to say, hey, look, let's have one design and one, one firm work on how these plants should look and operate.
Well, thank you.
Okay, we got a motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
And now Preston Pepper is coming back.
Oh, he's coming back.
I thought he left.
So we have a request to the Department of Parks and Recreation to apply for and submit and accept grants and application from the Department of Natural Resources, open space for the following projects. I'm going to let actually Preston go through these projects with you, and then of course, Councilmember DeVio is a member of the board and can certainly assist with this. So Preston?
So as you, as you know, Program Open Space funding source that we get from the state of Maryland. And this is, you know, this is a formality. Whenever we apply for a project, we need to have approval from our, our county council. So the thing I want you to really keep in mind is that this is not, you know, you know, if these items are approved, this isn't an ironclad item. We can change this. This kind of is just the first step in getting projects approved. You can always change a project, you know, do a different project, something like that. But this is a way that we get the, the funds encumbered. Couple of years ago, obviously, there was a time when the state wanted to unencumber some funds from each county that weren't dialed up into something. So one of the things we always try to do now is at least get them into a project queue, so those monies are then not able to be taken back from the state. So it used to be that a lot of the time, people would let your, your Program Open Space pot just grow and grow and grow, and then do a bunch of things afterwards. Well, the problem is when that money sits out there, it is susceptible, it is susceptible for the state to take those funds back. So the, the idea now is to get it all, get those funds locked up into different projects. So these projects are, I think we talked about these a little bit during the budget meeting. The first one on the list is irrigation and Bermuda. Right now, we've got, basically, it's just a fescue out at the community center property. Fescue's nice as far as your lawn at home. Fescue is not nice if you're trying to play sports on it. It's, you know, it's clumpy, it's really thick, balls don't roll in it very well. So most, most playable athletic fields are done with Bermuda. It grows closer to the ground, it covers the ground better, it, you know, just gives a better playing surface, and it recovers better. The biggest, the biggest advantage to Bermuda is it actually thrives in the heat. So it's really more active in the summer. That's why a lot of the time at golf courses, you see their fairways are yellow in the spring. They don't really start to green up until, you know, the hotter season moves in. So irrigation obviously goes along with that. Without irrigation, you're not really going to have a good stand of grass, which is one of the reasons why our, the property is the way it is. It's nice that grass, it just isn't well for sports.
So move, are you putting one by one?
Yeah.
Are we going to do it?
I think you should do it at the end.
Yeah, we do it.
Yeah, all at once, all at once.
So the second one on this list is pickleball courts. This is something that we talked about. For those of you that don't know, pickleball is actually one of the largest growing sports in the country. It actually grew, I believe, twenty-three percent during the pandemic, as far as participation went. For those of you that don't know what pickleball is, pickleball is kind of a cross between tennis and ping pong. It's a much smaller court, it's played two-on-two, it's just played with a wooden paddle and the old traditional wiffle ball, the big one with the holes in it. It's a lot less tiresome, it's a lot of less, you know, it was actually geared originally for more of the elder population because of the, you know, short rallies and everything, but it has actually grown all the way down. They now have, Las Vegas actually hosts the national pickleball tournaments, the same as any other sport, every year, from anything from, I think, the sixteen division all the way up into the ninety-year-olds. So they did a pickleball, there was a pickleball court here in Talbot County, or a tournament, rather, years ago, I think three hundred people signed up for that. So there is a need. We are constantly being approached by the USA Pickleball Federation to want to know where we can put pickleball courts in and, you know, what we can do as far as that goes. That actually would be located on the community center property. The easiest way to explain it is, there's a little bit of an ag field between the solar field and the building. It really can't get used for anything else due to its close proximity to Route fifty. But this is something that you could put up with a fence around it and windscreen. So it would be, you know, ideal. And then they could simply utilize the north addition parking lot to then walk over to play. So we wouldn't have to build a whole new parking lot along with the facilities.
How many would there be? Just the one?
Six.
Six.
The next one is a concession stand bathroom replacement. The concession stand bathroom that was built down at the community center, it's over thirty years old. It was actually, found out, it was actually built with Program Open Space funds some thirty years ago. It's an all-wood structure, it's definitely seeing its age at this point. It was built as an octagon, which is not real conducive for space. It leaves a lot of dead spaces in it just because of the configuration, plus it's out of the upstairs, it pretty much never gets used. The thought process would be originally was to tear it down and bring in one of the prefab bathrooms/concession stand. The problem with that is COVID has driven, driven the price of that facility up to over a quarter of a million dollars for something like that. So really, the easiest thing to do is to build a block building. What you would do, and my recommendation, would be the same look as kind of like a pavilion, except put brick walls around it. So it'd have the same metal roof, a lot like a pavilion would, and then you just put block walls on the inside. If you want to do fascia, fascia brick on the outside to make it look nicer, you can. But then it's, you know, with a block epoxy, it's able to be cleaned really easy, as far as the bathrooms go, and then a small area for a concession stand. Like I said, that, you know, by doing it from the ground up, I think you have more ability, and I think it would be a whole lot cheaper than a quarter of a million dollars. The next one is Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe Improvements. This is something kind of following the master plan. The thought process with this one is that this would go towards walking paths, the Pollinator Meadow, and the scenic overlooks that are going to be down there. The biggest thing with the Pollinator Meadow is you have a large property, it's, you know, it's almost sixty acres with a lot of real estate to do something with. So Pollinator is something that can really dress up that property in a relatively inexpensive way to do it. The other part with the scenic overlooks, you know, that's, one of the biggest thing, the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe, is the view of the Tuckahoe itself. The best places to view that are kind of down by the river, but the problem with that is it's on a sheer slope that's probably easily twenty, thirty feet above the water. So you don't obviously want your visitors getting too close to that, and/or the more they step on it, the more it's going to start eroding, and then you're going to have an even bigger problem. So the thought would be is to put in some scenic overlooks that people could go out on, and then you could always put some interpretive panels on there as well, you know, showing what might have been there back during the days of Frederick Douglass. And then the last one, which is actually in the capital enabling, is the replacement for the ice plant at the skating rink. The skating rink ice plant, parts of it are twenty-plus years old, some of its aren't. The thing right now is that it's, the cost efficient of that is clearly not what it should be. For example, we run, I would give, I would let Joy and Clay and Jessica give the tour that I gave them and tell me all the things I told them, but I, I'll not let them do that. But we run, we run six compressors out at our concession, at our, at our community center for the ice rink. Harrington has a newer system, they only run two. So they can get the exact same quality with a third of, of the engine that needs to run that machine. Right now, if you, as soon as you turn on the, as soon as you turn on the compressors for the R community center, our electric bill goes up about ten thousand dollars, just right up. But that's, I believe a lot of that is because we're running compressors that are over twenty years old. They're just grossly inefficient. On top of that, we have actually, our system runs what's called R twenty-two antifreeze, which, yeah, they're, and it's, it costs a hundred dollars a pound, and we've had several years where we've had leaks that it's like anything else, you don't know about it. We had one year where we lost almost three hundred and eighty pounds before, you know, the system finally let us know. This new system would go with an ammonia-based, and it could actually be set outside. The whole, the whole ice plant doesn't actually need to be inside the building, it can all be set outside, and that's just the way it's designed. So just, I, you know, not only would it be more efficient, I think that, you know, just, it would work better, and it would be more efficient. And I think, you know, as far as that goes, this is probably the way to go. So real quick, explain to you the POS funding. So what it is, is we always get an annual disbursement every year, which is usually right about three hundred thousand dollars that can go towards any Parks and Recreation item. It can either go towards development or acquisition. With that, it's usually park improvement, building improvement, some kind of recreational improvement. This year, with House Bill five ninety, we actually had two items that were brought into this year that were not normally something that was there. The first one was actually House Bill, and I'm not sure what the, if there was a moniker, but it actually was a two hundred thousand dollar addition by House Bill five ninety. What it did is it put in place monies to replace the ballfield lights at the community center with LEDs, and that's something that you guys remember we were always talking about, to put in LEDs there, and also to put in scoreboards at Perry Cabin Park. This was actually done by Delegate Mouts, so this was not, this was something that he took upon himself to put in House Bill five ninety. So, you know, a big thank you to him for that. The other thing was, House Bill five ninety did a bond issue this year that basically gave every county in the state of Maryland a, what we'll guess we can call it, the easiest thing is to call it a bonus, a Program Open Space funding. The least that any county got was a million dollars, which is what we got. So some of the smaller counties, such as Caroline County, Dorchester, Kent County, we had this extra million-dollar influx of POS, whereas your larger counties got eight, ten, twelve million dollars for some of the bigger counties. So that's where this, the replacement of the ice plant, that's a big one. I mean, it's a three-quarters of a million dollar project. The other thing you have to keep in mind is that the ice rink generates about six hundred thousand dollars in revenue every year. So it's just one of those things. So that's kind of where I am as far as projects go for Program Open Space for this fiscal year twenty-two.
Yeah, did I make a motion?
Yeah.
I did?
Not yet.
Okay. I'll make the motion, I didn't have a comment.
Second.
You have a second, okay.
I remember when the county first took over the Black and Decker Building, which is now, of course, the community, the business center.
I almost had to charge you a nickel there.
No.
Yeah, it was closed.
It was closed.
There was a, there was a, an operator in the building that was taking shipping containers, and he was taking shipping containers, and he was, he was rehabbing them into other medical buildings that were being shipped over to Desert Storm in the middle, in, during the war effort. And he was taking his containers. And he was taking his containers, and they were converting them into, again, offices for use and for the military. And then, of course, as the war came to an end, he was, there was no longer a need for it. A couple of weeks ago, I was in Wilmington, Delaware, and they have a location called Constitution Yard. And same idea, they took these shipping containers and they turned them into, where you can order your food, like restaurants, and they turned them into all different types of things. Just a, just a thought along those same lines for this, this concession stand. Would you think something like that would work, a converted shipping container, that you could just bring in and have it already prefabbed out with? Because I remember going over there and doing the tour. You couldn't even tell that you were inside of the container. There was walls added inside of it that had, of course, power sources in it as well, and flooring. Just a, just a thought, I mean.
I mean, I can, I can look into it. I wouldn't even, I, I mean, it's possible. I mean, I'm guessing.
Who even does that kind of work?
Right.
I'm good, thank you.
I think it was a great presentation. And I did, I have brought this up before to Preston, that just as, when Mr. Stamp came on board, he greeted the board, projects and goals and things that he'd like for us all to have accomplished. And I've charged the Parks Board with that, and I would like a council to give that to him as well, to kind of give some direction on, Little League is really falling off in Talbot County. There's a big reduction in teams. Travel ball has become much more popular. So do we want to go that direction? Do we want to get the park equipment going in Tillman, things like that? So just, just some things to think about as you're out and about. I'm looking at the parks. If you think of something, let us know and prioritize it.
Thank you, Mr. DiVillio. Preston, once again, good job thinking through this with your committee and coming up with these fantastic ideas and going through the next 70 years. So appreciate it. And I want to thank Johnny Mouts, too, publicly for stepping in and giving us money. So that was huge. So thank you, Johnny.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
That was the last thing on the county manager report agenda. I just have a couple of comments that I'd like to make. First is, I want to thank council for moving and passing the 15 bills, the capital improvement program. I don't know that the public understands, but a lot of thought goes into building the capital improvement program. And when you, when you're thinking about how to allocate these projects, we constantly think about those pillars to make Talbot County a resilient community. So we're looking at education and infrastructure, the environment, economic stability, public safety, health, and welfare. So these projects were well thought out, included, and they're scalable, flexible, and this takes it one step further. But I just want to thank council for your leadership in that. And then the last comment, on behalf of our department heads and employees, I want to thank you for your leadership. Difficult times we're in right now, but you all have come together, and we're moving some things together for the benefit of the community. So thank you very much. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. I appreciate, it was kind words, and I would agree with you 100%. The staff was doing a great job, and we are here to serve the community and all these big projects for council. I want to commend you on that. So we're moving forward on a lot of good things in the future. Okay, so next on, on the agenda is the public comment. So Mr. Lusher, could you, could you read the rolls for us, please?
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public and attendants to address the council regarding any county matter. Any member of the public desiring to be heard by the council shall raise their hand and wait to be recognized by the council president. Once recognized, the person shall state their name and address, and then direct their comments to the council as a body, not to individual council members or other members of the public. Each speaker shall be permitted to speak for no more than three minutes. Those speaking on behalf of an organization shall be given up to five minutes, unless otherwise authorized by the council president. Speakers are expected to be courteous and respectful. Personal impertinent or slanderous comment should not be tolerated. And we have a list of those who have signed up here. First on the list is Suzanne Todd of Claiborne.
Ms. Todd?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time. I have a story to relate to you. One of our grandsons was visiting us in Claiborne, and he's 11, and inquired about the Move the Monument signs and Preserve Talbot History signs. So I explained to him the situation. His response is, "Well, if this, if this monument or this statue bothers people, then it should be moved." This was his initial response. So I looked up the meaning of empathy, the ability to show and understand the feeling of others. And I believe our grandson, Vanny, was doing that. Of course, there are two sides to this issue, and I think all feelings need to be respected. But the point of moving the monument, the operative word is to move it, not to destroy it. And we all know that history should not be destroyed. But the monument is really not placed in an appropriate location. And it also contains the Confederate flag. This offends me greatly, and I would assume that it offends many in Talbot County, especially people of color, whose family history, in many cases, must include slavery, Jim Crow laws that affected their ancestors, maybe an involvement with the KKK, and also, our country has a history of lynchings. So I think that the statue needs to be relocated, where it could be still visited by family members or others who deem it as something they want to remember. And I know the council has been looking for a location and has not had success. So it would still seem appropriate to me if the monument could be placed in storage, and maybe a committee formed that could be actively looking for a better location rather than a place of honor on the Talbot County courthouse lawn. I know maybe this is a big ask, but I think it respects the feelings of both groups. I know the Unity Monument has been proposed as also a way of understanding and accepting feelings from both sides. But to me, it is a Band-Aid to this situation. So I appreciate your time tonight and hope you will take into consideration my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Todd, I appreciate it.
Next, Ridgely Ox of Bosman, Maryland.
Good evening. I'm Ridgely Ox, and I live in Bosman. I've been to enough county council meetings to know that each of you takes your job quite seriously as financial stewards of Talbot County. And as I've heard tonight, and I really appreciate that, I'm asking you to consider your role as moral stewards. I have three questions for you. One, would you choose to put up a Confederate monument today? Every day the statue remains, you are in essence voting to put it up. Two, do we really want to be known as the last county in the state to maintain such a statue? What signal does that send about our county? Three, isn't it time to move on and say that it has no place on the courthouse lawn? Our history is complicated and should in no way be diminished or lost, but we should not be celebrating those who fought to maintain slavery on the courthouse lawn. Symbols have power. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Ox, appreciate it.
Next up is Robin Strickoff of Eastern, Maryland.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I will be quick, but I would appreciate your giving me your attention. Kudos to all of you for adopting the diversity, equity, and inclusion statement for Talbot County posted on the county website. The county must move forward toward a culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion, thereby increasing the consciousness and appreciation of differences associated with the heritage, characteristics, and values of many different groups, as well as increasing the respect for the uniqueness of each individual. These are your words, not mine. How is respect for the uniqueness of each individual demonstrated by allowing a monument to remain on courthouse property honoring slavery, insurrection against our United States to prevent the end of slavery? Doesn't the well-worded diversity, equity, and inclusion statement ring hollow by continuing to allow the Talbot Boys Confederate monument to remain? And if you truly believe your diversity, equity, and inclusion policy, don't you think it's time to vote to move the monument? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And fourth and last on the sign-up list is Mickey Jerome of Oxford, Maryland.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you all. As a person involved with Move the Monument, I think one of the most important things that we do is to try to provide the you and the community as a whole with accurate information regarding the history of, not only of the monument, but the war and what brought the, what brought the county to where it was during the war, how the county acted and behaved, how the individuals behaved during, during the war. I think that if you haven't seen the website and looked and reviewed the information that was provided in the presentations, I think, you know, I think that I would hope that you, that you use that information strongly to help form your views of, of, of why the monument should be moved. I've challenged the, some of the information that's provided on the Preserve Talbot History website because I don't think it's accurate. There should be an article, if Mr. Sonics is direct, in tomorrow's paper, which specifically challenges some of those things. I think it's tremendously important to create a public examination of the facts surrounding the events of 1861 and before that, through 1865. I also think that the work of Dixon Preston, who wrote the history of Talbot County, is an important act, is important work, because I think from everything I can see, that it's generally speaking of very fair and a balanced narration of, of the, of the history. And I think he's tremendously clear. I mean, he provides an awful lot of very specific facts that I have not seen challenged in any specificity by the people who are challenging him and sort of diminishing the value of his work. I think that we should not do that. And I think that if you do, I think we should, that there should be some discussion of that, public discussion of how that, how that, you know, his work is questioned, questionable. I don't, I don't think it particularly is. I'm sure it's not perfect, but I, I don't think there's enough specificity there to seriously challenge his, his work, especially with respect to his summary of the, of the history of how the, the committee put together the, the Talbot Boys statue 50 years afterward, and, and how he clearly points out how it was based upon racism, white supremacy, Jim Crow. And, and that stains, in my view, it stains the, the presence of that, of that, of that statue, where it is located on the courthouse, you know, lawn. So my, my sense is that it's, you know, we have to continue, we have to look at, until you make your decision, we have to look at the, at the, at the facts and not be dulled by the mythology and the emotion of, of, of everything. And whatever your decision, based on the facts, I think that, that has to, you know, work for everyone. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is this, does anybody else like to comment? Okay, okay, so, all right. Move all to council comments hall.
What are you looking at me for?
Councilman? Council lady?
Thank you. Wanted to let you know that tomorrow, we start gearing up at NACO for the next legislative session, and tomorrow morning, I'm still a part of the Legislative Initiatives Committee, and we'll probably have 40 or 50, 40 or 50 different ideas, which will ultimately get whittled down to three or four. So that process begins, you know, bright and early on, on Wednesday morning in July, you know, in preparation for the January session. And then following that, we'll be getting an update of what happened in the 2021 session. So NACO never rests, and I'm looking forward, you know, to continuing to represent that and see what state issues that are coming, coming along, and what the counties, you know, it's really, it's really great to be a part of that committee, you know, with 15 or so people on there to see what issues are coming together. And it, every year, it's like, yes, we, big counties, little counties, you know, rural, urban, Democrat, Republican, you know, we all have the same issues. So I look forward to that process beginning again tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
Thank you.
Yes, had an opportunity to attend the NACO conference over the weekend down in Gaylord Hotel in National Harbor, and just had a wonderful time down there. A lot of great speakers, national speakers. Vice President was a guest speaker, Nancy Pelosi was there as well. Just a good time to just be with other council members from around the nation and talk with them about some of the same things that we're seeing here, how they are handling the, their planning stage for the American Rescue money that's coming to counties and states and municipal areas around the nation. And got a lot of great ideas from the different classes that were attended there. So look forward to participating with them. Did their leadership class last summer, during, last fall, I guess it was, during the shutdown, and was happy to be a part of that as well. I also want to send my congratulations out to our own Hugh Grundon over at Eastern Utility. He was recognized at the American Public Power Association as an exceptional leadership award, and saw that on one of the sites over the past couple of days. So wanted to throw a big shout out to Hugh for that recognition. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Mr. DiVillio?
I would just like to apologize. So I will not be here for the meeting on the 27th. I'm going to be out of town that day, those, the beginning of that week. So I will, I'll miss that meeting.
I have nothing further.
I'll wrap it up. So appreciate the great evening tonight. Appreciate you guys coming tonight, expressing your thoughts to us. That's what we're here for. And like Mr. Stamp said, we've got a lot of great things that we're going to accomplish in the next couple of years, and I'm happy to be a part of it. So at the end of the day, we're looking out for the community, and we've got a lot of positive things going, so.
Mr. Blesch, do you want to wrap it up for us?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 27th, beginning at 6:00 PM. The council will be convening an open session at 3:30 PM for a work session with Cassandra Van Hooser on
Mr. Lusher? Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second?
Second, Jay.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Yes. That's what I'm saying.
Do you even know what you're doing?